Okay, well, we're gonna get started. Welcome, everybody, to this special city council meeting. I am Paul. I'm the mayor pro tem right now. Mayor Mohamed is out on, I believe, business, out of town on business. So she couldn't be here tonight, so I'll be filling in. And I just appreciate you all coming out. We love civic engagement here. So we will, I'll call this meeting to order, and we'll do that with a roll call.
Councilmember Rog.
Here.
Councilmember Dumalag.
Here.
Councilmember Bud.
Here.
Councilmember Ferris.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Bodwin.
Here.
All right. We'll open up our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd like to join, you can stand and join us.
Pledge of Allegiance. Flag of the United States of America. To the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with its justiciables.
Okay. We already did roll call. What am I doing? And so we need to approve our agenda, so I would seek a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion, a second. Any comment? There being none, we will vote on approving the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. Moving right along, we have no presentations. We have no minutes to review. We have no consented items, no public hearings. However, we do have one regular business item. So I'm assuming you're all here for that. If you're not here for that, you're in the wrong room. No. So what we will do here with this item, this is the, where are my notes? Traffic control changes in Minnacata Vista is what we are looking at tonight. I would like, Jack's already up. I was gonna invite Jack forward. Our staff member will give us a little presentation on this, and then we'll proceed.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and council members. My name is Jack Sullivan. I'm the Assistant City Engineer here with the city. As noted, I'll be presenting tonight on the Minnacata Vista neighborhood traffic control changes. Excuse me. Tonight's presentation is intended to provide an overview of the project. More comprehensive information can be found in your council packet. Before we get started, I want to kind of draw your attention to the policy statement before us this evening, whether council supports installation of alternating stop controls in the Minnacata Vista neighborhood. And depending on how that goes, thank you. There's two action items, two resolutions. The first resolution would be to rescind the existing traffic control resolutions in the neighborhood. And the second one would be to kind of reinstate them on this new, this new pattern that we're proposing and recommending tonight. So I'll jump right in. Why is staff considering changes in this neighborhood? Over my 13 years here with the city through public engagement on numerous infrastructure projects, and as part of this pavement management project, staff, my colleagues and I have heard frequently from residents, users of the roadways in these neighborhoods, that there's some concern, that namely around traffic control, intersection control for that matter. And a common theme that comes up is that the stop signs are not meeting the expectation of really anyone in the neighborhood. Some examples of this are the users. Many of the pedestrians and bicyclists in the neighborhood expect vehicles to stop at the stop signs. It's been documented, we've shared some information with you in the past, it's in the report as well, that many drivers don't come to a complete stop in this neighborhood. And I say many, the vast, vast majority. Only about 12% come to a complete stop in this Minnacata Vista neighborhood area, Browndale as well. From the neighbors who are adjacent, we hear quite a bit about there's a need for either changes to those controls, traffic management, or in many cases enforcement of those kind of rolling stop signs or the, some of the other behavior that is kind of tied directly or indirectly to the intersection control. And from community members, we hear a lot about just why is one street have an all-way traffic stop, and the next block over or next intersection over maybe has no control? Why is there so much inconsistency? So in this Minnacata Vista neighborhood, staff took a look at 39 intersections at it within the neighborhood. And the neighborhood's really divided into kind of an eastern half and a western half. The eastern half is dominated by all-way stop controls. The western half is much more of a mix of side-street stop controls, a few all-way stop controls, a number of yield signs, and many that are just uncontrolled intersections. We did not take a look at any of the border streets, so Wooddale Avenue, Excelsior Boulevard, Franz Avenue, or a segment of 40th Street was not part of this analysis. We looked solely at the internal workings of the neighborhood on streets and intersections that we had full control over. So this kind of mix and this variability of different types of controls leads to confusion and frustration. Like I said, we, we hear about it from the community members in a number of different ways. So our goal was to remove some of that variability. Staff is recommending the systems approach. We've discussed this previously at some of our council work-study sessions, as well as in some of the other neighborhood discussions that we've had recently. This in a hopes to bring greater consistency and predictability to intersections across the Minnacata Vista neighborhood and from neighborhood to neighborhood. So what you see in the report, and what I'll be talking about in the rest of tonight's presentation, is that all the actions are consistent with a systems approach to intersection control. And just for a quick primer, a reminder, systems approach means that we are reviewing and addressing traffic control requests as part of a network, rather than focusing on a single intersection in isolation. Frequently, we would get comments to look at just one intersection. And a lot of cases, when you do that, you tend to get this patchwork of all-way control here, nothing at the next one over, and, and then somewhere in between on the third one. And so we're really looking at these as a, across the board, and following a similar process to how we brought forward the Browndale neighborhood, and how we brought forward the 29th Street project as well, all of these in the last couple of years. Creating safe, comfortable, and predictable streets is the goal that's shared by staff, many of the community members that are out here tonight, and the council as well. I've heard it from you numerous times. How do we make our streets as safe as possible for all users? So at looking at these 39 intersections, we considered three main factors. First is kind of industry standards, best practices for stop sign installation. These are typically referred to as stop sign warrants, and that's kind of the first one bullet here. When a stop sign should be installed based on the number of vehicles entering the intersection, any obstructions, sightlines, and then the history and type of crashes that could be occurring at that location. The second factor we looked at was neighborhood predictability. As I kind of talked a minute ago, ensuring that we have a consistent approach across the neighborhood, across similar streets is beneficial for bikes, peds, and our vehicles. And then the last one, community feedback. We'll talk in a little more detail in a few minutes about, you know, getting the input and gathering the input from the neighbors, the residents, and other roadway users about what they're seeing and their ways that they travel and utilize the roadways. While many, if not almost all of these intersections within the Minnacata Vista don't meet the criteria for an all-way stop, some meet the criteria for two-way stop, staff recognizes that the community's desire is to have stop-controlled intersections. So we try to use some of these three criteria, these factors, to, to ensure that we have strike this balance between the input, our engineering standards, in an effort to maintain a safe and predictable outcome or application across the community. So staff is recommending that we install a kind of an alternating stop control intersection pattern throughout the neighborhood. It is a guideline. It's a, it's a general statement. There's a number of intersections you'll see in here that have always stops, some that are still left as uncontrolled, but a much more predictable and much more consistent pattern. So we did an analysis. We used those three factors. We came up this recommendation. What you see on the left is the graphic of what's out there today, and the graphic on the right is what we're recommending. We communicated this recommendation to this neighborhood, this community, following kind of the process that was outlined in the Connected Infrastructure Report that kind of kicked off this and other neighborhoods that we did. And also kind of mirrored what we did in Browndale neighborhood. These were both done at the same year with pavement management, and we're now approaching the traffic changes kind of systematically as we work our way through. This graphic and other data was part of a newsletter that went out. It was, it's a copy in your council packet. The newsletter was sent out to just under 1,000 properties in this neighborhood, over 2,000 email recipients that were signed up, both in Minnacata Vista and in the Browndale neighborhood, to make them aware of our recommendations, what we're planning to do, and more importantly, why we were planning to do this. And that's all that information that was, that is seen in the packet. I keep referring to these 39 intersections. That's a lot. That's one of our bigger neighborhoods when it took, when we take a look at traffic control. We looked at the Browndale neighborhood earlier, about this time last year, and implemented this spring, and it didn't have this many, this many intersections. And it did not have this many intersections that we are recommending changes. In this project, we're recommending 30 intersections to be modified somehow. Most of those cases are removing two of the four stop signs at intersection, but in some cases, it's adding in stop controls or adding in yield signs. As you'd expect, changing 30 intersections generated a significant amount of feedback. I know many of you have received some of that feedback in either phone calls, emails, communications. I, as staff, have received a fair number of those as well. I've personally talked with and corresponded with about 70 residents in the neighborhood, met a number of them onsite as well, to talk about this, these changes, why we're recommending them, and what it means for their, for their neighborhood and their, their intersection. Based on this feedback, based on these 70 folks that reached out to staff, we committed to take a second look at the entire neighborhood. So we looked at every intersection again, just looking through it, not only through the, kind of the three criteria that we talked about earlier on, but trying to look through it through their experiences, what they see as they drive it, as they walk it, as they take their kid to the bus stop, or in some cases, folks that, you know, utilize the corridor to do their business on a daily basis. And so with that, we were able to keep the vast majority of our recommendations the same. However, we did modify two locations. The two locations that we modified, I zoomed in here a little bit for you, is the 40th and Quentin. Kept that at an always stop. There's some more information in your packet as to why we did that. But that's a, one of those criteria we looked at was kind of the sightlines and obstructions that were out there. The other one that we kept in was 42nd at the intersection of Princeton and Quentin, so just south of Susan Lindgren School. This too had some sightline challenges, and it was one that we recommended to keep, keep in. So with the first newsletter that went out, with the amount of feedback that we received, and with our second analysis or review and some modifications, we wanted to go back out to the public, let them know that we had heard, and we had taken a second look. And although we may not have addressed or changed the recommendation at their intersection, we were making some adjustments. And so this newsletter, or this map that went out, went kind of to the same 2,000 emails, as well as direct correspondence to everyone that was part of that initial conversation that we had throughout this last month of October and most of November. Staff, we believe that this is a more consistent approach to the intersection control, and that it will create intersections that are easier to navigate and more predictable for everyone, in hopes that we can ensure changes will be effective to staff, excuse me, effective for all. One of the things that I heard over and over again from the community is, you know, what if this doesn't work as you expected? What if this changes? What if that? And it's in the report, and I'll state it here again tonight, that we're gonna continue to take community feedback, right? As these changes, if they get approved and once they're implemented, we want to hear back from those residents about what they're seeing out there. We also want to do our own monitoring of intersections following this implementation. We also want to review the data. And what I mean by that is we have a lot of this data that helped us formulate these recommendations. We have the ability to understand how many vehicles are traveling on these roads every day, what the speeds of those vehicles are traveling, to some degree where their origin and their destinations end up being. So we want to be able to look at that as a, as a post-situation as well. And we would consider modifications if conditions warranted, you know, adjustments. Certainly agree that, as we talked about, 30 intersections is a heck of a lot of them. And although we believe this is kind of a sound approach, looking at the entire neighborhood, we do want to make sure that we have this correct and that we can move forward in a, in a way that is sustainable long-term for this. Creating these safe, comfortable, and predictable streets is a goal that we all share. And the recommendations that we have before you tonight reflect that systems approach that council asked us to look at, ensuring that we adjust or review traffic control decisions on this broader network, rather than at individual intersections. And it is with that that I have the recommendation before you tonight, which is rescinding the existing resolutions. There's actually 23 of them that pertain to these 30 intersections in the neighborhood. Some resolutions have multiple intersections that they control. And then the second action would be then to authorize the new installation of the traffic control. I thank you for the opportunity to present this item. I know we have a lot of public feedback here to talk tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions related to either the report or this brief council presentation. Like I said, there's, there's much more information, but wanted to allow the appropriate time for others to share their opinions.
All right. Thank you, Jack. Before I open this up to our, my council colleagues for any clarifying questions, I just wanted to say a quick word about the comment time that will be coming in a minute. It really is just public comment. Oftentimes, what happens is you come ready to make a comment, then you hear a presentation, and it sparks some questions. But our comment period is not a question-and-answer time. But we will have some staff around here after the meeting if you want to ask some clarifying questions. You can do it after the meeting. But when you come forward to do your comments, it's just comments to the council. So I want to be clear about that. And so with that, do any of my colleagues have any clarifying questions for staff? Go ahead.
Hi. Thank you. Thank you for that report. Thank you to all the citizens for sharing their public feedback. I've seen a lot of it. You talked about crash history being one of the issues. On the warrants, do we have that crash history available to us right now? Or you said something we can get later?
I can certainly provide that at a later date. I don't have it available with me. We typically, we use a system that's actually maintained by the state of Minnesota. That system is actually the data that our police officers, the county police, and any state patrol police that report any accident or on-scene at any accident within the community into a database over the 10 years, last 10 years. So I have a rolling 10-year crash history in the community, and in particular in this neighborhood, and can share that information. That crash history is everything from distracted driving, you know, fender benders, hit-and-runs, that 2:00 AM kind of scenario, all the way through up into the more severe crashes that we have experienced in our community. So yes, I can certainly provide that.
Sure. And I appreciate you sharing that crash data with us later. If you have any recollection of it at all, or having seen it on a regular basis versus other neighborhoods, is this a more dangerous neighborhood? Does this have an inordinate amount of crashes? Have there been any fatalities there?
A general statement would be this is pretty consistent with any other neighborhood in town where the majority of the crash reports are related to side swipes and other kind of mid-block activities, whether it's distracted driving, or slippery road, or something of that nature. But I could get, but there was no larger or higher severity incidences that would be of concern. We do a pretty thorough, in a weekly, review of any pet or bike accidents that occur in the community, as well as, you know, any of those more severe accidents. So we're always kind of keeping up to date with those on a weekly basis from our police department.
Thank you very much for that, and it's good to hear that the people aren't getting injured on a regular basis over there. Thank you.
Anybody else have questions? Go ahead.
I just had a question as it related to the, you know, I found the pie charts really informative around complete stops versus rolling stops. Do you know or have an idea of over what period of time we have gathered that? Or is that something we do periodically? How does that work?
We typically collect that data in advance of a neighborhood street reconstruction project, much like when we come to you with a project, whether it's this, this pavement management that just kind of occurred, or the next project, that in this case, maybe Cedar Lake Road or some of these others. We are collecting data such as this type of speeds, volumes, crash history. We're looking at some of the, what the parking needs around a corridor. And one of the things we've been looking at, namely in this neighborhood, was kind of looking at the stop signs, because we recognize, not just when we kicked off this pavement management project, did we hear it? But I've been with the city 13 years. This is one of the areas where we continue to get, one of the neighborhoods that we continue to get feedback in. So recognizing that we had that baseline information, we decided to go out and do this data collection at these locations. We also compared that data collection that we had, because it is strikingly low compliance with kind of industry standards, with some standards that, or some studies that were done here regionally, and they align pretty well, right? It's not just a St. Louis Park issue. It's not just a metro issue. It's not even a state issue, unfortunately. It's a kind of across the board, across the country, where the, the rolling stops and the failing to even kind of put your foot on the brake at all is more prevalent than we would like it to be.
Anybody else? I have one question. I noticed on the map, there are a number of uncontrolled intersections, and I'm just curious about the rationale for having uncontrolled intersections at all. That's one thing I've always, I'm never comfortable in an uncontrolled intersection.
So the only intersections that we left uncontrolled, and in this map, and sorry, the scale's a little hard to see, but it's the orange squares. And the rationale behind that was the extreme low volume of these streets. If you look at these, they're all cul-de-sacs. They're all 200, 300 feet long at, at the most. And they're really utilized by the same property owners, and the same delivery, the same post office, the same pizza delivery folks on a regular basis. You know, in a lot of cases, if you kind of go by those warrants, we wouldn't recommend, like I said, many of these stop signs out here. But they do have some guidance on kind of the yield signs, or even no control at all. And so we've tried to use some of that guidance and some of these low, low volumes, and considering kind of balancing that need of where signage should be and where too much signage just is background noise and doesn't become effective.
Fair enough. Thank you. Okay. Nobody else has any questions with that? I will open this up for public comment. A couple things about our comment time. When you come forward, you will have three minutes to share, and tonight we have a lot of people who want to talk. So we're gonna, I'm gonna be pretty strict about that three minutes, so that we give everybody a fair, a fair shot. To help you with that, if you'll notice this little rectangle up here, when you start speaking, that will be green. That'll mean you have three minutes left at that point. When it turns to yellow, you will have one minute left to speak. And then when there's 36 seconds left, it'll start flashing red, and that's where we really want you to, to wrap up. Now, I'm not gonna, you know, give you a hard stop in the middle of a sentence, but once you hit that three minutes, if you really could kind of tighten it up and, and finish up, that would be really helpful, especially with the number of people that we have who want to share tonight. And so, and I appreciate you all filling out these blue cards. This does help move things along. And one of the ways we do that is I'll actually call up two people. And then when that first person's done, the next person will come, and I'll call up the other person who would then be on deck. So we're kind of constantly ready to go. So there'll be a queue of two people up here all the time. And am I missing anything? I don't think so. So yeah, I will open up this, this public comment time, and the first two people I invited, the first person is Paul Jennings, I'll have come forward, and then Kate Pickman. Oh, and when you come up, if you could state your name and your address, we need that for the record. Thank you.
Sure. My name is Paul Jennings, and my address is 3925 Joppa Avenue South, which is on the east side of the, a north-south street that runs parallel to France. I should indicate to you that my ethics as a retired attorney is to identify to you that I am in retired status as an attorney. I worked in the county attorney's office for 30 years. Most of you didn't get a chance to meet me because I work criminal part of the time and civil arrest.
Thank goodness.
I had a conversation with Mr. Sullivan, I think it was earlier in the week, and it was very pleasant. But I disagree totally with his approach to this problem. I think he approached it as an engineer and not as a driver. I had opportunity in juvenile court to do some traffic cases. And the first statement that I'll point out is that he makes stop signs into something about right-of-way. Well, they are, but there are about three or four reasons for stop signs, including sightline, whether you're gonna have cross-traffic that's a lot heavier, east-west versus north-south, and a whole bunch of stuff. And none of that's really discussed very well in his memo. And I want to emphasize, I'm not criticizing him as a person. He just approached it totally as an engineer and not as a driver. The other thing he did was he talked about edina in Minneapolis. I would suggest to you with the Minneapolis Police Department, and I worked for the park police for two summers while I was in law school, before I started with the county attorney's office, before I spent six months in the city attorney's office. And if you don't slow down in Minneapolis, you're asking for trouble, because they're 200 officers short on what they think is a minimum amount. And so you gotta take a longer look in Minneapolis, or you're gonna be in trouble. And yet he's suggesting a system here in which even in our neighborhood, which is one of 30, we're gonna remove 26 stop signs, including one that's a half a block from my house. I live close to Minnehaha Park. And when I walk to the corner, it's only a half block to go over there. It's a four-way right over there, and he argues that that one is a four-way because of the park. Well, half a block away, we're gonna eliminate two stop signs? Does not make sense. This needs to be reworked from the viewpoint of drivers, not engineers. Drivers, not engineers. And they're all in a hurry, except for the people on 38th who wanted all those stop signs to slow down traffic that was cutting through to Byerley's and, and Target. And everybody in our neighborhood knows that. And so it needs to be reworked.
Okay.
Thank you. Any questions?
No. Kate Pickman, come forward to the microphone, and then I'll invite up Rudy Rosen to be on deck.
Hi, Kate Pickman, 3829 Kipling Avenue. Longtime resident. I live with my husband Greg on Kipling between 38th and 39th Street. Our block is also home to 13 children under the age of 16, most of whom are in elementary or middle school. We believe that the proposed traffic control plan for Minnacata Vista is dangerous and unsupported by data. SLP Traffic Engineers proposed to convert many of our all-way stop intersections to two-way by removing stop signs. They claim fewer stop signs will compel better stop sign compliance and lower speeds. This opinion is not based on any quantitative data. They conducted one study in 2023 where they monitored four intersections in Minnacata Vista during one 24-hour period. Somehow, from observing that not all drivers made a complete stop, they concluded that stop signs should be removed. They also cite the SPAC Consulting Study from 2018, which concluded that 73% of drivers did not come to a complete stop at stop signs. However, flipping it around, the same data says that 89% of drivers either fully stopped or made a slow-rolling stop. Drivers had to apply their brakes in order to do that. Brakes equal less speed, and that's basic physics. Regarding data on the impact of stop signs on motorist speed, two studies are noteworthy, one in Canada, one in Minnesota. The Canada study from 2022 is rigorous before and after. The Canada study from 2022 is a rigorous before-and-after study conducted by engineers at McGill University. They studied the conversion of two-way stops to all-way stops over a two-year period using careful video analysis and found significant reduction in motorist speed. The second study is from Richfield, Minnesota. In 2008, a city council member proposed adding more stop signs throughout the city. Residents were having trouble backing out of their driveways, and there were accidents. The city transportation engineer believed that the overuse of stop signs reduces their effectiveness, but a year later found that the addition of new stop signs had lowered driver speeds by 64%. Regarding the basket weave concept of alternating stop sign pattern placement, you have not provided a quantitative before-and-after study that shows this method of stop sign placement improves safety by reducing speed. We believe that removing stop signs will increase driver confusion, which will not improve stop sign compliance or reduce speeds. For as long as we've lived on Kipling, there's been an all-way stop at Kipling and 39th Street. Currently, elementary school kids wait for the bus on the southwest corner. To reach it, they cross 39th Street, where the stop sign is slated to be removed by your inconsidered plan. In the morning at the time, at this time of year, the kids are at that bus stop in the dark. Your proposal to downgrade the intersections at both ends of our street from all-way to two-way stops is patently unnecessary and will degrade safety. You need to give us some empirically sound, traffic calming strategies to improve safety in the neighborhood.
Can you, and we're gonna need to wrap you up, I'm sorry.
Okay.
You've gone over your time.
Sorry about that.
If you have just like one more sense.
This proposal is a dangerous experiment, in our opinion. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. All right, Rudy Rosen up to the microphone, and then if Patrick Roche could queue up, that would be great.
I'm Rudy Rosen. I live at 3800 Joppa Avenue South. I live on the hard corner of 38th and Joppa with my wife and three children. I wanted to quickly point out, because there was some discussion about Browndale and how this was done, Browndale was done first. Browndale is a significantly different situation. It's an insulated neighborhood. It's bounded by Highway 100. The primarily people driving in Browndale live in Browndale and have an investment within Browndale because of that. Within Minnacada Vista, you have Excelsior Boulevard running northeast and southwest, creating a bit of a triangle. We live in a world of Google Maps. People are gonna go the fastest way they can find out to go, which often involves cutting through 38th, 39th, and other streets within our neighborhood. That is commuter traffic. That's not traffic from within our neighborhood. When you have people without that investment within their community attempting to get somewhere as fast as they can to cut through to France, to Edina, to Linden Hills, to De Maikaskah, to Uptown, to various other places, and then you remove traffic controls from our neighborhood, that creates a problem. There's a guiding principle, I believe, in traffic control, that you want to move people to arterial streets, to major arterials, and dissuade them from using smaller roads and traveling through residential areas. This proposal is achieving the exact opposite of that. It's incentivizing people to cut through neighborhoods with pedestrian traffic, with bicycle traffic, with children, and with a significant amount of driveways and people backing out. There are small lots, we have a lot of driveways, and when you do that with people who don't live in the neighborhood constantly cutting through, and you invite them to come through your neighborhood, you are going to see people traveling at faster speeds, unaware of the layout of the neighborhood, and creating a situation that is much less safe for the entire community that lives there. I would ask you to reconsider this proposal as it stands. I don't think it's for the best of the actual community and stakeholders. I think it only helps people trying to cut through our community in as fast of a manner as possible. Thank you.
Okay. Patrick, you can come forward, and then I would invite Lynn Wick to queue up. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Patrick Roach, 3836 Kipling Avenue South. I'm here because some, I live on 3800 block of Kipling, and some of my neighbors who couldn't be here today have asked me to come. I've spoken with each and every one of the neighbors on my block who all opposed, with the exception of one woman who wouldn't take a position one way or the other, but overwhelmingly opposed this. So I just wanted to put that, I have their signatures here with their addresses. And first, first matter, I'd like you to stay any judgment on this decision tonight. I don't think adequate due process has been provided. I was, I received an email from one of my neighbors who was emailed a document dump last night with this report in it. This report incorporates hundreds of pages of meeting minutes and other reports by reference. So I don't think there's a chance to meaningfully respond. So I'd request that you stay judgment here and either, you know, reschedule this meeting for a later date, or leave the record open so we can submit rebuttal materials in the next 30 days. That's my first point. I think my second point is that this is a solution in search of a problem. Nobody ever asked for this, not one person. This precipitated when a couple of people in the neighborhood wanted more stop signs. So based on the 2022 policy change that rescinded the 1999 policy of reviewing everything on a case-by-basis basis and applying a community-wide approach to this, you know, superimposing this basket weave system on neighborhoods, that basically became a foregone conclusion once somebody made a complaint. I, I would implore you to ask the people who made those requests for stop signs whether they're happy, whether they would have consented to this policy enactment, knowing that 29 or 26 of the stop signs in the neighborhood would disappear, making it woefully more And I guess it begs the question of whether the whole 2024 pavement management project was a pretext to get these sort of comments from neighborhood so that they could superimpose this system. I think the majority of people oppose. I don't, I don't think there's anybody who supports this. I haven't talked to anybody who supports this, this policy. And as far as the, the warrants that Mr. Sullivan suggests, I think those apply to new neighborhoods. I don't see anything that says that this is how we should review taking away stop signs, existing stop signs from neighborhoods. So I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Do we need this for the record?
I don't know, do we? Yeah, yeah, we'll take it. It'll be helpful. All right, I'll invite Lynn to the microphone, and if Bill Weber could queue up, that would be great. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Lynn Wick. I live at the corner of 40th and Quentin. I was very involved in the 2019 petition that got us a four-way stop at that intersection. And it was, since then, crossing there has been incredibly way safer for everybody. Changing it back to a two-way was initially proposed with this traffic redo. I want to take this opportunity to thank Jack Sullivan and everybody else that might have listened to us because you reconsidered, and now you are in fact keeping it a four-way stop, which is just logical if you ever drive through it. I don't know how many of you have actually driven through the neighborhood and through these stop signs that are being considered anyway. I want to thank you that you're keeping it a four-way stop. Tonight, I'm here only on behalf of Betsy Tarnowski and the proposed change at Natchez and Valleger, which is gonna be proposed to change from a four-way stop to a two-way stop. Betsy couldn't be here tonight. I've got, this is not a petition because petitions aren't allowed anymore, but we've got a sign, you know, there's a list of like 34 signatures in here of people that live right there in the community that care about keeping this a four-way stop. I would, Jack was given this list by Betsy, and we could make it available to you all via email if you want tomorrow. I mean, you've probably got enough going on, but anyway. You know, in general, stop sign compliance is never 100% guaranteed, but stop signs continue to be used a lot. They're pretty much universally noticed, and they're paid attention to in some fashion. Studies and statistics do not count near misses, close calls, or scary moments, which will be a guaranteed increase if the Natchez Valleger loses its four-way and becomes a two-way. You know, speed limit signs are also rarely, if ever, 100% obeyed, but no one suggests we might as well remove them. I bet everybody here even has gone faster than 20 in the neighborhood, and even maybe sped up a little bit to make it to the light at Excelsior. So simple common sense would indicate this particular stop sign, this four-way, keep it a four-way stop. It's a logical, good idea. Please reconsider the plan and keep it a four-way. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'll invite Bill to the microphone, and if Tim Burke could queue up, that would be great. Go right ahead.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Bill Weber, 3824 Huntington Avenue. Thank you for having us meeting. My concern is that neighborhood quality is much more important than citywide consistency. And so I advocate that this decision be put off till next year so we can consider the many concerns that are being raised here tonight. But my particular concern is 38th Street. 38th Street is qualitatively, quantitatively much different from every street in the neighborhood, I must say. 38th Street is turning into a highway across the neighborhood. You go out there at PM Peak, and the traffic backs up from France Avenue to Huntington or Inglewood in both directions, from Excelsior to Huntington. The speed is only controlled by the stop signs. If it were not for the stop signs on 38th Street, it would be a highway. Removing two stop signs would only increase the speeds. There's a lot of pedestrian traffic moving north and south across the neighborhood, across 38th Street, from the northern part of the neighborhood down to Minnacada Vista Park and other points. Removing two of the stop signs would make that much more dangerous. So I want, I advocate that 38th Street be kept as it is. Do not remove any of the stop signs on 38th Street, or else you're inviting an absolute disaster on that street. The traffic volume on 38th Street has increased dramatically just in the last two or three years, and as someone else suggested, it's probably because of Google Maps, because there hasn't been that much more development, but there's a lot more traffic, including semis. They're being mindlessly routed through the middle of the neighborhood. So I, I, I say to you, neighborhood quality is much more important than consistency across the city. But please keep all the stop signs on 38th Street. Thank you very much.
All right. Tim can step to the microphone, and this one's a little tough to read, but I think it's Steve May could queue up. Go ahead.
Mayor Protem, council members, Tim Burke, 3741 Huntington. Thank you for your patient listening tonight, and thank you to staff for all the time they've put in. The city's done a great job over the last number of years making this neighborhood more walkable, more bikeable, all the rest. And with that comes the commensurate responsibility for safety and not doing anything that will undercut safety and ideally doing things that promote and enhance safety. And to the question about crash data, I, there doesn't seem to be anything that suggests this will increase safety. We heard a lot about predictability. We heard a lot about consistency. Those are means, those are not ends. The end is safety. And how do we promote safety in this neighborhood? And based on the materials that we've received, it doesn't seem that there's a compelling case to believe that this proposal will increase safety and in fact may undercut safety, which obviously is the last thing anyone here, residents, council members, staff wants. As was noted earlier, you know, this was prompted by concerns about stop sign compliance, which really was a concern about safety. That was a symptom, but it's about safety, and I think it's important to go back and review this from the perspective of how do we enhance safety or at least not undercut it in that, as with any neighborhood. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Steve, come to the microphone, and if Mark, I apologize if I pronounce your last name incorrectly, Rieckow, could queue up. Mark R. Did I, okay, we got somebody coming.
Hello, Steve May, 3901 Joppa. Jack, it's been a long time since we've been in the same meeting. Thank you, council, for taking the time to hear us. And as it's been mentioned, I've lived in the neighborhood 35 years, and I remember when we put the stop signs in on 39th going east and west all along there to help slow down the traffic. And that was, I believe, before your time, Jack. But, and it did do that. And so now we're changing our mind after an experiment, and so I have a real hard time with that. The, Jack, you mentioned that we want to remove variability, but that doesn't have anything to do with increasing safety, as I see it. Yeah, we can make it more consistent throughout the city one way or another, but that doesn't lead to increase in safety. As it was just mentioned, and I think it's a great point, the, we're doing everything we can to make this community more walkable, and now by removing the stop signs, then it appears, I mean, the optics are really bad on this. I mean, everybody I talk to goes, what? And I give some of the data points, you know, that we're taking these out, so we're lowering the common denominator, but that'll make it better. That just doesn't make any sense. So I would encourage you to, I'm most concerned with the stop signs on 39th and 38th Street, and I'd encourage you to leave them in as they are, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. If you want to step forward, and William Raylitz, Rayelts? Sorry, I'm mispronouncing that name. I too have a hard name to pronounce. How do you say your last name?
Rico.
Rico, okay.
Yeah, you weren't, you weren't too far off.
Okay, so if William could queue up, that would be great. Go ahead, Mark.
Mark Rico, I live at 3839, 3833 Kipling Avenue, and I'd like to take the opportunity to read an email that I sent to the mayor, to my councilwoman, and to Mr. Sullivan just recently. It's very brief. I've been following the process of making changes to stop sign usage in our immediate neighborhood. In particular, I'm concerned about the proposal to remove all-way stops at the intersections of 38th and 39th Streets in Kipling and make them two-way stops. As I believe you are aware, there are 13 children under the age of 15 on our block between 38th and 39th Streets on Kipling, and it is quite likely that the removal of the stop signs has the potential of increasing the speed on that block and thus reducing safety. It would be helpful to fully understand the objective of the planned change. Does this improve the flow of traffic? By what amount? How do you balance the needs of auto traffic with the safety of residents, especially the most vulnerable, the children, in our decision-making process? As you may be aware, over the last five years, the incidence of pedestrian accidents nationally has increased significantly. Where walkers and bikers are in close contact with motor vehicles and safety lanes are not clearly established and understood, accidents are happening at an increasing rate. Communities are trying to be more receptive to creating safe-walking and biking pathways, which promote healthy lifestyles and a stronger sense of community. The action proposed seems to increase the risks of our neighborhood with little benefit, it would seem, in return. We don't know at this point in time what the impact will be if the proposed changes are implemented, but good research has shown that involving, moving from a two-way stop to an all-way stop does improve safety. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And is William, William Rayelts here? No? Okay, I'll invite Bruce Richardson to come to the microphone, and if, do, 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 Mickey Goldstein could queue up, that would be great.
Thank you all for listening to us. It is safer in our neighborhood that includes 38th Street, oh, by the way, I'm at 3800 Glenhurst, right on the corner. It's safer for our neighborhood that includes 38th Street to have traffic slowed by the stop signs than to speed up traffic by giving in to those bad actors who run the stop signs. Stop signs slow down speeders and protect our children. My four-year-old grandson rides his trike in the neighborhood and we make sure he crosses safely. The cars usually stop at the stop signs. The city of St. Louis Park seems more interested in traffic movement than neighborhood safety. Our neighborhood objective around 38th Street is to reduce the amount of traffic on 38th Street. There are several ways to do this. We can take them up later, but the city's concern seems to be speeding up the traffic on 38th Street. Stop signs on 38th Street keep traffic slowed to under 20 miles per hour. Our city traffic engineer confirmed this to me. Taking out stop signs will only increase the speed on 38th Street traffic. That will increase the danger to our children. We hope you will listen to your neighbors who see the traffic increase from 20, from 20 to 25% in the past two years. Please vote for traffic safety."
Invite Mickey Goldstein to the microphone and Claudia Johnston-Madison to queue up, please.
That's my neighbor there. Most of, good evening, everybody. Jack.
Good evening.
Most of what I have to say has already been said, so I'm going to try not to be too redundant. But I was in here, I've been a resident of St. Louis Park for 74 years, and my present location, 3800 Glenhurst, for 49 years. I love living in St. Louis Park. People, some of my friends ask me, why aren't you moving into, I said, I'm not moving. I'm not going anywhere because I love it here. I like the, the politics, I like everything about it. Well, about 25, 30 years ago, Jim Brenmeyer and after him Charlie, the city managers, we got together and tried to figure out, how can we keep people off of 38th Street? Not encourage them to go on. At one time, there was a light, an arrow, that you couldn't turn right onto 38th Street unless you had the green arrow. Kept a lot of people away. The present traffic manager seems to be interested mostly in moving traffic. My concern is, and I think it should be, how do we keep people that don't live in the neighborhood out of our neighborhood? Now, in Tangletown in South Minneapolis, they did a good job of that. If anybody's tried to, tried to go around there, there are not too many people that say, I'm going to use that neighborhood for a cut-through. And that, to me, should be the, if anything, that considered traffic changes, that should be the main concern. I know, Jack, you live in Edina, right? And I had met with him and stuff, and he told me that sometimes he cuts through the neighborhood to go back to his home. He doesn't live in St. Louis Park, but he's cutting through our neighborhood when he could have stayed on Excelsior Boulevard and gone to France Avenue. Probably is quicker because of the slowness of the traffic there, but it's a little shorter, so people do that. I don't, I don't know what the percentage is, but it's a high percentage. More than 50%, am I right, Jack? Of people that don't live in the neighborhood that use 38th Street, South Minneapolis, Morningside area, Edina, and around 50th, and around Southdale. Remember, 50th was closed on 100, and so people were going to the next exit, coming down Excelsior and cutting down 38th. And I'm pretty sure that's where, where he was going. But anyways, the, the emphasis should be on how to keep people off of it. And, but by taking stop signs away, you're encouraging people, making it quicker to cut through. I don't have kids that age, or even grandkids or older, so, but I'm, I'm concerned about a lot of the other kids in the neighborhood, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Claudia, if you want to come forward, and if Amy Kinsley could queue up. Name and address, please.
Hi there. My name is Claudia Johnston-Madison. I live at 39, 31 Joppa Avenue South. However, tonight I am speaking on behalf of Jonathan and Kathleen Hoffman, who live at 3905 Joppa. They have two small children and couldn't be here today. Is Kathleen's mother here tonight?
Yeah.
Okay, did you want to do this or not? Do you want me to continue?
You can make your comment.
Okay, all right, so, all right. I would like this interchange to be deducted if possible. So I have actually an email to Mr. Sullivan from Jonathan saying, "I'm aware you have approved two modifications to your proposals, both on Quentin Avenue based on the line-of-sight concerns. You have overlooked line-of-sight concerns on several blocks that I'm asking you to reconsider. These intersections have the same sight-of-line issues that led to your approving variations on Quentin, and for the same reason I'm asking you to make similar variations as outlined below. I have included pictures as visual comparisons. Unlike Quentin, these intersections experience extremely heavy foot traffic as they directly lead to two large playgrounds in the neighborhood. Very young children often cross these intersections on bikes and scooters, sometimes ahead of their parents. Modifying these stop signs will create blind crossings that could easily lead to a child being hit by a vehicle that is not forced to slow or stop. You've made no changes to the following streets, that's 40th and Quentin. These are accompanied by pictures, and 46th and Quentin-Priston. Due to the same sight-of-line, sign of light, sight issues, the city should make no changes to the following intersections: 39th and Glenhurst, 39th and Huntington, 39th and Joppa." And the email then goes on later. "I'm writing this as a follow-up to an email to bring your awareness to our neighborhood's significant concerns with the proposed traffic sign reduction proposal. Mr. Sullivan, the city engineer is asking council to approve drastic, unrelated changes to the traffic safety patterns in Minnacotta Vista and Brown neighborhoods." I think he means Brown Hill. "I, with support from many of our neighbors, am asking council to reject these proposals for three reasons. First, starting with the premise that the current intersection control structure was based on proper engineering standards, the proposed modifications do not meet DOT recommendations." And it goes on to quote, "Section 2B07 Stop Line," there's a long, what do you call it, HTTPS, whatever. I can give this to the city clerk. "Three factors justifying multi-way stop signs have not been considered by the city engineer to any extent. Number one, the volume of traffic from each direction. Number two, the need to control pedestrian conflicts." Oh, I think I'm over the list.
Can you wrap up, if you could, please?
Yeah, I will round, round this up, but there are two, three other very, very important issues that Jonathan is bringing up in this. I'm going to turn this over to the city clerk, and we want these added to the minutes, please. And then I reserve the right to come back up here and speak for myself if I find something that I'd like to say. Okay? So I'd like my own three minutes later, if possible. Thank you.
Okay, Amy Kinsley, come forward, and if Mary Mackey could queue up.
Good afternoon. I am Amy Kinsley. I'm at 3928 Joppa Avenue. I live there with my 10-year-old son and my four-year-old Dalmatian. Like my neighbors who've spoken earlier, the first thing I did when I heard about the proposed changes was to try to understand what research is out there, data there is to support these decisions. I found that there were some studies that showed limited improvements in certain contexts. But I did find that there were a variety of studies that showed that always stops reduce speeds, increase yielding, and improve safety for pedestrians. But I think before we apply any sort of research or any data that we've collected, that it's really important that we consider the lived experiences of the people in the neighborhood. And so I'm going to urge you to hear mine tonight. So I'm going to share with you an email that I sent to my council member. And within there, I laid out some points that I think are important. The first was regarding the safety for children and families accessing the park. The stop sign at 39th and Joppa is located along a primary walking and biking route to Minnacotta Vista Park. Families regularly cross Joppa at this intersection, and young children are often ahead of their parents on scooters, bikes, or rollerblades. And sometimes they're quite a bit of a way ahead. Even when drivers perform a rolling stop rather than a full stop, the presence of the sign slows traffic and creates a predictable pause point where both the driver and the child can see one another. This brief reduction in speed and increased visual attention meaningfully increases safety for children who may enter the intersection unpredictably. My 10-year-old son and I have experienced this ourselves multiple times. Learning to rollerblade is hard. Removing the stop sign would eliminate that predictable pause. If removal is being considered, I urge that an alternative pedestrian crossing sign with flashing beacons preserve the visibility and driver awareness needed for families accessing the park. The second is the protection for pets and neighborhood walkers. Our neighborhood has many pet owners, and dogs have gotten loose despite owners' best efforts. I've personally returned several dogs to their owners in the past year. Stop signs provide drivers with a built-in moment to, to slow down and scan their surroundings. This can prevent injuries to pets that may dart out into the road unexpectedly and especially at those intersections. So for a neighborhood where walking dogs is quite common, reducing the number of controlled intersections increases that risk without really any sort of corresponding safety benefit. We have several elderly neighbors who walk daily, often with their pets. These pedestrians benefit the most from the predictable slow-speed intersections. Last year, I encountered, encountered an elderly man who had fallen off of the sidewalk into the roadway, and he was injured and disoriented. The presence of a stop sign at that intersection ensured that approaching cars were slowing down, and that reduced the likelihood that there was a serious secondary injury to the man and also to those who had stopped to help. Removing the signage reduces that margin of safety for those with slower reaction times, mobility challenges, or impaired stability. I urge you to consider that. There's limited visibility due to roadway design."
You need to wrap it up, Amy, I'm sorry.
Okay. That's okay. Let's end on that point because I think those were strong enough for you to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mary, you can come forward, and if Linda Jennings could queue up.
Hello, I'm Mary Mackey. I live at 3924 Joppa Avenue South. I don't really have much to add. I do endorse everything that's been said here tonight. My big question, I guess, is why are we trying to fix something that isn't broken? I think encourage, removing stop signs in the neighborhood right now would just invite more traffic, and that has increased exponentially in the last three years. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Linda wants to come forward, and if Penny Laporte could come, queue up, that would be great.
Linda Jennings, 3925 Joppa. This is a memo, email I sent to council and Jack Sullivan on behalf of myself, my husband, Paul, as well as Kendall and Diana Camp, John Madison and Claudia Johnston-Madison. "We strongly believe a four-way stop at 39th Street and Joppa Avenue should be retained. The north, the north-south stop sign should not be eliminated. This is a safety issue for all ages, for pedestrians and for drivers. As 50-year residents on 39th and Joppa, we have seen Joppa become a cut, cut-through option to France Avenue. Please note the following facts. If the current north-south stop at 39th and Joppa is eliminated, drivers will have three consecutive blocks without a north-south stop sign. This is 41st Street in Edina to 40th Street, 40th Street to 39th Street, and 39th Street to 38th Street. At 38th Street, there's a stop sign. This appears to be the longest unrestricted street distance in the neighborhood, affecting the most people, residents of 43 SLP houses plus residents of 13 Edina homes. Traffic on Joppa is significantly affected nine months of the year by two private schools located one and two blocks from the St. Louis Park-Edina border. Both schools serve younger students, so parents drive their children to school and pick them up at the end of the school day. Many travel through St. Louis Park on Joppa. Golden Year Preschool is at 42nd and Street in Grimes, 125 students." I'm going to try and get through this, some time left here. "And with students from Edina and a smaller number from St. Louis Park. A Vail Academy on 41st Street in Inglewood has 150 to 200 students, kindergarten through eighth grade. And most of Vail students live outside the Edina-St. Louis Park area." So another, a concern is the confusion about speed limits. People driving from Edina, where the speed limit, residential speed limit is 25 miles per hour, likely do not realize when they enter St. Louis Park that the speed limit is 20 miles an hour. I'm talking about Joppa, which turns into Grimes, as some of you may not know, in, in Edina. So I could, they, as you turn, oh, turn on, I'm sorry, I see the light flashing. Well, I'll go on to a few other things, but we don't have the sign, speed sign posted in, on Joppa. So people have to assume the coming up Grimes, which is a very steep hill, what do people do on a hill? They accelerate, and they think probably the speed limit is 25. We're talking about people from Minnetoka and other places going to these schools. It's difficult to drive out of driveways as well as even pull away from the curb. The addition of extensive sidewalks in Edina has dramatically increased pedestrian traffic, which is terrific, but it's also, means we have to be more proactive about safety, too.
Okay, Linda, I need you to, if you can, to wrap it up, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's all right, thank you. All right, Penny, if you want to come forward, and Karen Kelly-Bridston could queue up.
Good evening. I'm Penny Laporte. I'm at 3741 Huntington, and my biggest concerns are probably about the stop sign removal on 38th Street. I just want to say I wholeheartedly agree with all of the comments that have been made by my neighbors today and the concern about the safety issues. I also want to commend the city and thank the city for all of its efforts to improve walkability in the community, adding the sidewalks on, on Vallekar and 40th. I take full advantage of that, as I know many of my neighbors do. And so I appreciate that, and it seems like that has been a strong initiative of the city's, yet removing stop signs and, or removing traffic controls seems to me to be counter to those initiatives. And I also think longer term, it seems to be counter to your Vision 4.0 initiatives in which you want to, a commitment to people-first infrastructure with connected sidewalks, protected bikeways, safe streets, and reliable invisible systems that support daily life. So I encourage you to think about the short term as well as the long-term impacts on our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen could come forward to the microphone, and Kristin, is that Sigmund? Okay. Thank you, would queue up.
Hello, I'm Karen Kelly-Bridston, and I live at 3921 Joppa Avenue South with my husband. We've lived there for 28 years. And I'm reading from my neighbor, Paul Miller, tonight. This is his letter that he had submitted. He lives at 3908 Joppa Avenue South. "As the study used in developing the current policy state, stop signs should not be used for speed deterrence but rather for regulating right-of-way. This is guidance but not permission to remove warts and stop signs. In totality, I read the MUTCD as saying stop signs must be used where a full stop is needed for safety. In other words, are there non-vehicle users who rely on the stop sign, including pedestrians, children, walking to school, et cetera? If removing the sign would expose them to risk, it stays. The intersection of 39th and Joppa is the main and only direct pedestrian route to access Minnacotta Vista Park, one block to the east. There is no recorded mention of any type of study of pedestrian traffic, including by the time of day or time of year at this intersection. There was no discussion or indication of city policies regarding pedestrian safety and how this weighed in the proposal recommendations. I see reference to the judgment of city engineers. That judgment should be data-driven, not quantitative, qualitative." That judgment should be data-driven, not quantitative, qualitative. Point two, the removal of the stop signs on the north and south sides of 39th and Joppa is inconsistent with the basket weave that has been proposed. For the remainder of the neighborhood, it fails to consider that there is no current stop sign at the intersection of Grimes, Joppa, and 40th Street. This means that the elimination of the Joppa stop signs will result in no traffic control on Joppa-Grimes between the intersection of Inglewood and Grimes in Edina through to 38th and Joppa. The stated average 19 mile-per-hour speed of vehicles on Joppa Avenue is inconsistent with my experience and those of others on the block. When and how was this calculated? At what point on the block was this measured? What is the average for northbound versus southbound? What percent of vehicles exceed the 20 mile-per-hour limit? And of those, what is the average speed? What specific data do the traffic engineers use in assessing pedestrian volumes by time of day and time of year at the intersection of 39th and Joppa? Please share the detailed study and conclusions. Where this alternating stop sign design has recently been implemented, there's commentary that it's been well-received. Opinions are fine, but data are the test of realized benefit. Please share the change pre-versus-post in average speed, the percent of vehicles exceeding the posted speed limit, the average speed of those exceeding this posted limit, the change in total traffic volume, when it was measured, what time of year that it was measured, and the duration over which it was measured. The council documents make reference to monitoring changes, assuming the stop sign change is approved. What specific data elements will be measured? How will the impact to pedestrian safety be measured? At what points in time will they be measured? And what is the definition of success? And he said, what is the evaluation criteria and weighting of each measure for the council to make a data-driven decision? How and when will the data be formally shared with residents? Thank you.
Thank you. You can step to the microphone, and if Lindsey Rose could queue up.
My name is Kristin Sigismund. I live at 3905 Glenhurst. And as you heard, my daughter lives at 3905 Joppa. Kathleen Hoffman and her husband, John. I agree with almost everything that's been said today. I'll just emphasize a few things. First, I'm very concerned about the intersection at 3905 Joppa for the reasons people have described, that we haven't thought about the very, very, very long, unstopped speedway that will be created up from Grimes, up that hill, all the way down to 38th. And lots of people cut through from Edina, and they will speed. And people's experience, my daughter and son-in-law's, they're speeding now. Stopping that is bad, and people use that to get to the park. This area is not like Browndale. People cut through all the time to get from Excelsior to France. It is a speedway, as has been discussed. And that's the reason the stop signs were put in there in my lifetime. I remember when they went in, to slow people down, and they have slowed people down. Third point, I don't really understand the point of removing them. And I don't get this thing about, yeah, people aren't stopping. It's true, people aren't stopping, but people are slowing. And you all know, you don't have to have a study. We all know that if there's a longer stretch, people are going to step on the gas. And if you're telling me people are driving 20 miles an hour, they are not. That is not happening. Most people slow down. Now, I live on that cul-de-sac at 39th and Glenhurst. I really don't know why you want to remove all the rest of the stop signs and let people just speed right past Minnetoka Vista Park and oop, stop there at Inglewood. People are crossing, crossing, crossing to get to that sledding hill, to get to the basketball courts. I don't understand that. I mean, I guess I can get out of my intersection, but I'm going to tell you, there's a huge hill that I go up, and people are going to come down that hill in the winter time? Oop, sorry, they have to stop, but the other ones don't? They're going to slide, there're going to be crashes. I've seen crashes. I've seen people slide down that hill. So I don't think I need to say anything more. Oh, I'll say one thing more. How much is it going to cost to remove 36 signs? Why are we paying taxpayer money on something that we don't really need? Who is complaining about this?
Lindsey, if you could step forward to the microphone, and if Connor McDougall could queue up.
Good evening. My name is Lindsey Rose. I've lived on 3716 Huntington between 37th and 38th for the past decade. My husband Jason and I walk daily through Minnetoka Vista with our dog and family, and we are so grateful for the current stop signs that exist, especially along 38th and 39th, so that we may cross safely, even though some motorists, as noted, are in a rush and don't always abide by them. I appreciate them slowing. Reiterating what Rudy Rosen shared, we live adjacent to Minneapolis and Edina, and we see firsthand the cut-through traffic between Excelsior and France Avenue, and people already fly through the neighborhood, especially by Mickey Goldstein's house. So I don't see how removing stop signs helped keep our neighborhood any safer. I strongly oppose the proposed alternative stop sign pattern, especially the removal of four-way stop signs on 38th Street that run from Excelsior Boulevard through Joppa, Inglewood, Huntington, Glenhurst, and all the way to France Avenue in favor for an alternating stop sign model. I believe this change will increase confusion for drivers, reduce safety for pedestrians, including young children with their futures ahead of them, and bikers that live in the neighborhood and pass through the neighborhood, and also encourage additional car traffic along the 38th Street corridor. The current four-way stops lay a critical role in slowing vehicles, keeping our families and children and neighbors and pets safer. That's the goal. 38th Street is heavily crossed by all sorts of families, children, bicyclists, pedestrians, and viewed as a relatively safe route as it stands now, especially when motorists obey the current stop signs. It also serves as a regular rocking route and bus stop location for so many schools. Removing these signs and shifting to an alternating pattern will likely increase vehicle speeds and volume, directly contradicting the priority and safety concerns of neighborhood residents. I respectfully urge you to oppose the transition to an alternating stop sign model and maintain the existing four-way stops to help protect our neighbors and community. Thank you so much for listening to all of us tonight and for your consideration.
Okay, thank you, Lindsey. Connor, if you want to step forward to the microphone, and if Peter Bridston could queue up.
Hey there, Connor McDougall, 3836 Joppa Avenue South. So we're right at the intersection of Joppa and 39th, right there. Couple houses in. I had a lot to say, but it looks like my neighbors have their finger on the pulse. Pretty much, all my notes have pretty much been talked about. But I will hit on a couple of things. One of the things that was also just discussed is stop sign compliance. I think that we're in error looking at this by, oh, if they're not stopping, completely failure. Incorrect. If somebody rolls to a stop sign at 10 miles an hour, is that not safer than them blowing through it at 50 on their phone? Unfortunately, laws aren't applied, or I suppose, followed consistently. If we're going to remove stop signs, are we also going to say they're going to now follow the speed limit? They're not going to go on their phones. Unfortunately, that is not how that works. We've seen that all the time. I got stuck behind somebody on my way here at a red light on their phone. And unfortunately, it's happening everywhere. It's happening in our neighborhoods, and that's what this is. This is our neighborhood, where we live with our families, our pets, our kids. I have a four-year-old son. He learned how to ride a scooter. He's not doing very well on his bike, but he's trying. And we're using that street, that intersection. If we remove those stop signs, I have significant concerns for the safety of my family, my pets, as well as those that live on my street and around me. And it's not just 39th Street. I've heard a lot of arguments tonight talking about many of the other streets that are also very important to our network, our community, our neighborhood. We walk them, we run them, we ride them. There's school buses, cars, runners, cyclists, many, many different people use these sidewalks that we just put in, which is great. But then let's also protect those people. Let's use these stop signs. I work professionally in an industry that is focused on safety. Daily, I make decisions that alter hundreds of peoples' lives. I look at data, safety management systems, threat and error management models. I use those things to make decisions for the safety of other people. I have a hard time looking at the data that we've been shown, other than the studies that were shown from McGill and other places showing the stop signs work, and looking at this and being able to go, removing this would help anybody. It will not make it safer. That is the bottom line. Ultimately, we're a neighborhood. We're not a highway. It's why a lot of us live in this neighborhood. We live in this neighborhood. This is our neighborhood. And I feel like our voice needs to be heard, rather than just making a few people that use this neighborhood to transverse it a little bit less inconvenient. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Peter?
Hello, I'm Peter Bridston at 3921 Joppa Avenue South. I've been there for 28 years. I always have to ask that. And we've been married how long? Never mind, never mind. All right, I'm just going to read an email that I sent fairly late today, just to make sure it gets of record. Dear City Council members, my Minnetoka Vista neighbors have done a great job presenting thorough, logical arguments as to why removing the north-south stop signs at 39th Street and Joppa is a bad idea. So I'm going to keep this email succinct. Number one, Joppa Avenue South is undoubtedly the busiest north-south street between Wooddale and France Avenue for vehicles moving between the cities of Edina and St. Louis Park. Number two, West 39th Street crossing Joppa Avenue South is the major east-west pedestrian route to Minnetoka Vista Park. Number three, foot traffic to Minnetoka Vista Park across this intersection continues to be busy during the winter due to the large number of walkers, dog walkers, and children seeking access to the open space, walking trails, and excellent sledding hill. I would note that not all children on their way to the park are accompanied by adults. And of course, driving and walking conditions are often at their most treacherous when sledders are active. Number four, removing the stop signs in question would create a three-block north-south straightaway. A lot of people have talked about this already on Grimes and Joppa Avenue. It's not a two-block straightaway as it looks in the plan that was up on that screen there. Removing, or, sorry, I lost my place here. As people pointed out before, there are no stop signs at the Edina border, which is 40th and Joppa. Number five, if the north-south stop signs at 39th and Joppa are removed, I will guarantee you that the average vehicle speeds will increase on Joppa. And perhaps most importantly, the speeds of the fastest 10 or so daily cars that cut through the neighborhood will increase dramatically, well beyond the posted limit. Number six, I reject the notion that stop signs cannot be used for speed control, but only for right-of-way. They are, in fact, an effective form of speed control, and in my opinion, more palatable than speed bumps, traffic circles, narrowed curb cuts, or even abnormally slow speed limits, which are often disobeyed. To my knowledge, number seven, there is little to no neighborhood dissent on the north-south-West 39th Street and Joppa Avenue stop signs issue. I am not aware of any Minnetoka Vista resident who thinks the removal of that stop sign is a good idea. Regardless of the methodology that you all eventually choose, I say that this is a special circumstance intersection that needs to be handled as a special case. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank you all for filling out the blue cards. It really does help move things along more smoothly, as I think you could see tonight. But blue cards are not required to make comments, so I will leave this open for just a minute. If anybody else wants to share, you can just come forward. And if there isn't, then I'll close the public comment time. But if anybody would like to come, okay? Just remember to state your name and address.
Yep, thank you for the opportunity. Donna Skiblenko, 3744 Huntington. I sent an email earlier today to council members. I echo everything that's been said. I think the people who spoke kind of covered all the points that I had. I just think that this is an opportunity for the city council to hear the feedback and revise the policy that produced these recommendations. Because I heard that, as part of Jack's presentation, I heard that, heard about consistency, predictability, best practices. But none of those things are the top priorities for us as residents. We care about safety. So I think this is an opportunity for the council to go back to the drawing board and look at the criteria or the priorities for the policy that drives the development of recommendations like that.
Thank you. You didn't turn in your card.
I didn't, sorry.
It's okay, it's okay.
Olivia Luterbach, 38th and Joppa. I share my neighbors' concerns for safety and definitely for the corridor from Grimes to Joppa. But I would love to talk about logic in decision-making as a final note today. I think it's a great place to close. Generally, I feel like the stance of adding or removing stop signs is something that requires the burden of proof of insufficiency, either from there aren't enough or there are too many. And my understanding is that the community came forward. The impetus of this was a couple of residents speaking up on the grounds of insufficiency, but not because there were too many, but rather because there weren't enough. So somewhere along the line, we switched gears from add more to take them away, which is the first thing that doesn't make sense. So the title of the motion, which is installation of alternating stop signs, feels a little bit misleading. It is not installing anything, it's removing them. I haven't seen a great case for reasonable removal, but the argument in favor of that is consistency. The thing about consistency is that, as Mr. Sullivan presented, there have been modifications and changes, and the borders of other cities not considered. So consistency also isn't really true when we look at the updated version of the plan. Next thing is that I agree with my neighbor Rudy that Browndale is not an appropriate comparable. But if we did consider it an appropriate comparable, I think one of the reasons for doing Browndale before Minnetoka Vista was to learn from the experiences in that neighborhood, and we've not seen any evidence that it worked. So if this was decided around this time last year, they were installed when the ground was thawed, we would think that by now, we would have enough data to say that was a great solution for safety and for speed. Finally, I agree with Kate that stop sign compliance annotation does assert that 88% of people did not come to a complete stop, but I think we should consider the 66% who slowed down or did. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? Okay. Well done, y'all. We made it through. There was a lot, but I want to say, just, you know, to say it, that we really do value public comment. One, because it is helpful. But two, it also is a sign of engagement, and it's a sign of a city that you love. People tend not to, you know, give their time to things that they don't love. So really appreciate you coming out here and sending the emails and speaking up tonight. This is what I think a healthy community looks like, so thank you. At this time now, I'm going to move it over to my council colleagues, see if anybody has any comments or motions. Go ahead.
Yep, thank you. I move that we delay this vote and revisit the policy of the traffic sign, whatever policy that we initially discussed in 2022.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Would you like to speak to that, council member Dumlock?
Yeah, no. And thank you to the residents. I know I met with a number of you prior to this meeting. A couple of things that, you know, again, this is a policy. It was decided amongst the city. And sometimes the question is, do we do it citywide to make things more fair and even? Or do we look at geographic-specific areas? So that was the question that was posed to us in 2022. And the council at that time said, okay, let's make this more fair. Let's roll this out. And admittedly, this is something that would be more easier for staff to consider. And at the time, the council was different. And so we had two council members, or a mayor and a council member, that are no longer on this council. We have two council members here that were not part of that decision-making process. And we have two council members here that this is our second-to-last meeting. And so the reason why I'm choosing to delay and revisit the policy is that it is important for me to have residents feel that they can trust their representatives. And it's more important for me to really give thought to the question of geographic-specific versus rolling out and making things a bit more consistent and fair within the city. So that's one of the reasons why, these are the main reasons why I'm suggesting that we delay this vote, but revisit and give staff direction so that there is a policy, there is a clear policy moving forward. Also, I should note that, thank you, Jack, for spending so much time on this policy and Deb, and talking to the residents and receiving Deb, and talking to the residents and receiving that feedback, sometimes difficult, sometimes constructive, but feed that nonetheless. And as Mayor Protem mentioned, the fact that so many of you are here today willing to talk on this issue just means that you love your community very much. So with that, that is why I made the motion to delay this vote and to revisit the policy.
Okay. So we are dealing with a motion that has been seconded around delaying the vote. Does anybody have any comments? And revisiting the policy. Thank you. And so does anybody else have any comments on that particular piece?
I would just like to say something quickly. I talked to a couple people from you guys' neighborhood. And I was, I'm just amazed tonight because I was not a part of this. So don't fault me. But, um, no, seriously, just to see you guys come together, this is amazing on a pretty bad night, you know? And, and one person said something that really stuck with me. You live in this community. You know, these are your children, your seniors. You know, you walk these streets. Who, who better to say than you guys? So I just want to say thank you. And again, don't fault me, I was not here.
But you will be soon.
You will be.
You're, you're still on council.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. I'll, I'll certainly support the motion. I was part of the policy adoption and it does make sense to me and I'm happy to revisit it a bit. I appreciate all the neighbors coming out and you're concerned about your neighborhood. And that really makes sense to me. Public safety really matters to us, too. I do kind of feel uncomfortable with the suggestion that engineers don't prioritize safety. They do. And they're working on it here. And from what I can see, the thing that would promote safety most there is to send our police department out there and enforce the stop signs to get people in the neighborhood and the visitors that are cutting through to stop. Because way too many roll through them all. I've been really diligent since I got on council about always stopping. And I see I'm really the exception, not the rule. And if we need to dial it up with the enforcement to cut people down from going through these communities, that'd be great. I want to see it and I think we should talk to public safety and the police department about that. The proposal tonight was, it looked like to me that we weren't proposing taking out any of the four-way stops on 38th and 39th from Kipling all the way over.
There were.
That there was a petition. No, I thought the new.
Hold on. Look, go ahead.
I thought the new map that I have in here, anyway, is it different? Can you put the proposal up? It's okay. All right. There's some question about that. But it looked like the petition had led to at least one of the four-way stops on Joppa at 38th being kept, or maybe it was 39th. Maybe I meant correct on that. So anyway, I'd like to see increased enforcement and I'll support this motion and we'll revisit it in the new year.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thanks. So as Lynette mentioned, this is our, my second-to-the-last meeting. In my eight years on council, and in particular campaigning beforehand, safety on our streets has been a prevailing issue, a prevailing concern for residents. Unfortunately, I know, you know, yeah, so we're talking about safety. And, and now I'm stopping myself and thinking that you didn't necessarily come forward initially and say that you had safety concerns in your community. But I certainly heard a lot of them tonight, right? Especially around 38th Street and other places where, where people are speeding. And the reason I say all that is that I won't be part of this revisiting process. I'm really pleased with this, this approach. I think it makes sense, you know, to listen to the community and, and, and take another look with a different council. But I'm hopeful that we can come up, that the future council will look at even some, some more creative solutions, some of which were proposed tonight, or some different solutions, including the flashing beacons, more of those in our community. I know we've often rejected the idea of speed bumps or speed humps. Maybe that's something that needs to be considered. I'm not sure because this is just such a, such a consistently presenting problem in the community. And, and then I also want to note, maybe perhaps more 20 mile per hour speed limit signs at certain key entry points to the community where they currently don't exist. And then lastly, I also use 38th Street. I'm so sorry. I'm going to think about that going forward. But it is a tempting cut through. And so like, how do we, how do we address that issue as well? So I'm just really grateful, you know, now from afar in the future, but just thinking about how all the inputs that you all have provided this evening and throughout your, the time that you've been communicating, hopefully, I think will lead to addressing perhaps issues that wouldn't otherwise have been addressed by virtue of this conversation not happening. So those are my comments.
Okay. Go ahead, Susan.
And I don't have a lot to add to what has already been said, but I would like to say that I think we missed the mark on the pedestrian study. I mean, you all are talking about the, the amount of pedestrian traffic, you know, increasing, connect the park is a big initiative of ours to, you know, increase pedestrian and, and bike traffic and reduce vehicular traffic. So I think that including that or incorporating that in a more intentional way is something that will be important as we revisit this, assuming this passes. And, and I also wanted to say that I have seen a lot of public testimony and, and the unified message that all of you are bringing is really strong. You know, a lot of times we hear pro and cons to, to an issue. And you guys are all delivering a very unified message. And so that's coming across really strongly. I appreciate that. And I do not take 38th because of all the stop signs. So I stay on those main roads and go that way. So thank you.
All right. I'll just, I just wanted to say one, one thing. As somebody who lived in Brown Dale for two years and somebody who has in-laws in that part of Edina and a mother who lives on the east side of Harriet, I travel, have traveled and traveled through Minicotta Vista a lot. And I do use 38th and I try to do it respectfully. But it is definitely a, a cut through for a lot of people. This is to be sure. And I will say, though, that it is a public road and people do have the right to cut through there. It is a public road, but we need to make sure it's done safely. And while I am a, I do like our, our system's approach around things, there's no one-size-fits-all way to do, do these things. I do, I'm a big believer in that we need to look at the particularities. We'll try to work the system that we have, but sometimes the system needs to be adjusted to fit the particularities of an area or a neighborhood. And so I, too, am in favor of delaying this into the new year and taking another look at how we go about these, these kinds of plans. So go ahead.
Yeah. Just one last comment. Isn't governing fun?
It's so fun.
It is so fun. So, you know, a lot of comments were said tonight. And for the future council, the question of, do you prioritize pedestrians? Do you prioritize cars? Are roads, is the neighborhood specific and only for the neighbors? Or is our roads a shared resource? Also, police is a, is a resource as well? Is it worth having a police officer watch all the stop sign compliance when we have other pressing needs in the city? These are all things that council members have to weigh as we're making these decisions. But I really appreciate everyone coming and talking to me earlier before we have this meeting. And really, thank you for the testimony. I know some people were really nervous about the mic, but really glad that you got up there and stated what you needed to say and that it was taken for the, for the record. Thank you.
All right. That's a lot, but good work. And when we said, you know, it's governing, it is, this is good work. I do, I really value the work that we do up here. So there's no other comments or questions? Go ahead.
Sorry, just a clarifying question. So we are voting to delay the vote and also direct staff to, or direct council, direct staff to, sorry.
Yeah, to revisit the policy that was approved in 2022. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you for that clarification. That is what we're voting on. So all in favor of delaying this conversation into 2026 and revisiting the policies made in 2022, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That passes unanimously. Okay. There you go. We do not, I, do we have any communications? Okay, go ahead, Kim.
I do have a couple of announcements. Thank you all. As you're, as you're packing up here, I'll just say that we have some winter weather, some more winter weather coming, and it might be kind of slushy. So we are going to be out and staff plowing tomorrow, Wednesday. Please help out the plow drivers by not parking across the street from each other, getting your cars off the streets if you can. We're going to try and do a full plow if the, if the weather allows. Also, though, if we don't get the snow and the rain, we will be working on our ice rinks. It's the same staff who debuff both of those things. So hoping that if the, if the weather sticks okay, we'll be able to get the rinks ready by the end of the week. And then my last announcement is just that next week is our final meeting of the year. It's where the council will adopt the final budget for 2026. And then we will reconvene the first Monday in January.
All right. Anybody else have any? Go ahead.
Reminder about the holiday train this Sunday, six-ish over by Step.
All right. Anybody else? Well, until we meet again, Hanukkah will start, so I'm going to wish a happy Hanukkah to any of our celebrating friends out there. And then I am also going to just declare this meeting adjourned.